The meeting is now called to order, items from the public. Need a motion to approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda for Thursday, March 27, 2025.
With the removal of the recognition of the retiring employee.
Second amendment.
Then properly moved and secondly, further discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. On the purchase order law, have any questions? We're facing. There are none, very good. You have no internal budget revision this week, Mr. Vaughn. But we do have changes status received from the Honorable Joe Kinsler, prosecuting attorney for salary increases for the following clearness necessary to change from forty-four five to forty-six thousand. Megan Page to change from forty-four thousand five hundred to forty-six thousand. Samantha Boatria to be changed from forty-two thousand to forty-five thousand. Ashley Halfley to change from forty-one thousand five hundred to forty-three thousand five hundred. Raymond Boyce to change from one hundred and ten thousand to one hundred and eighteen thousand. Jerick Allen to change from seventy-six thousand to eighty thousand. Dominic Ossini to change from seventy-five thousand to seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two, effective four one twenty twenty-five. A recommendation received the Honorable Sheriff Rob Blair to rehire Hunter Reeve as an animal control officer, effective three twenty-eight twenty-five, with an annual salary of thirty-six thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. New hire recommendation received from Martin Roberts, fire chief for Matthew Jones, Devin Kidwell, and John Dykstrom as firefighter one, effective four sixteen twenty-five, with annual salaries of fifty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, emergency communications director for Danielle Ray, telecommunicator two, for a step increase for years of service with a salary change from fifty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars to fifty-four thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars, effective four five twenty-five. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, emergency communications director for Radina Miller to be promoted to telecommunicator one from telecommunicator two, I'm sorry, from telecommunicator one to telecommunicator two with a salary change of fifty thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars to fifty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, effective four five twenty-five. Have a letter resignation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Robert Shaw, who was a part-time process server, effective three nineteen twenty-five. On March twenty minutes, everybody was present, so we can leave that in. Next is a request to apply for fiscal year twenty twenty-six West Virginia Community Corrections Grant and resolution. Maybe it caught up to you here. Okay, this is a twelve-month grant. Ninth year seeking the continued funding for the DRC to include items such as salaries for the director, office administrator, case manager, drivers, drug screen, supplies, lab testing fees, and offender monitoring. The total project request is five hundred and ninety-nine thousand ninety-six dollars, and that's a thirty percent match required of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. I say that's been a longstanding grant opportunity for us. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved second.
Properly moved and secondly, further discussion. There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We've not received anything from the assessor this week on that. Next, we have board meeting reports. Mr. Boyd.
Yes, sir. I did so far this week have a couple meetings, but maybe was the CVB yesterday. Their current balance sitting at six hundred and thirty-six ten. The reports are that things are down a little bit. This year, we're at forty-five point three percent. For February last year, we were at fifty-six point one occupancy. Of course, we do, I believe, have a new hotel or two there. There are currently fourteen hundred and twenty-six hotel rooms. Year-to-date for twenty-five, we're at forty-three percent. Last year, we were at forty-nine percent. Working with Jefferson County to work on some combined marketing in the DC Dulles area on buses and different things to try to drive in some of the DC Virginia market for tourism. The ad dates are targeted for early May this year. They have their new magazine getting ready to come out. They have a few more ads to sell in that. It circulates for between a year to two years. Talks about local attractions, different things, and some local businesses can advertise in it as well. They're starting to work on a restaurant week. It's something that was done in Jefferson County and did well. Hope to do it this upcoming fall or into the winter when restaurants report a little slower income time and try to, they hope to get at least ten restaurants to start. Do a type of special that's like a thirty for thirty deal and list the restaurants that offer it and do it during the week and get people to different restaurants. And let's see. It was approximately, using their tracking, approximately eleven thousand people at the St. Patty's Day event downtown. They came from as far as two to three hours away, some of them. I think there were a handful that came, you know, just very minimal that traveled in further, I guess, to visit people to come for that event. But again, like I said, Main Street said that it's been announced as the biggest St. Patrick's Day event in West Virginia, so it's a good thing. Art walks are slated to start first Saturday in April and run April through December. They'll be going on in the art district downtown. And the city is currently working on a new art district thing to kind of override the old historic preservation board. A lot of people look to buy properties and different things in the city in the historic district, and then after they buy it, they find out, oh, I can't paint it this color, I can't do this, I can't do that. So they're working to put swatches together that would give you an array of colors that say, hey, it can be any of these colors, any of these colors, you know, and then you have a guideline and you don't have to put everything in front of the historic preservation to get the things done. So that's something they're all working together to do. They awarded a five thousand dollar grant to the Tony M. Family Concert Series. That's every Thursday throughout the summer, ten-thirty to eleven-fifteen. They're averaging about a hundred parents, kids, and people every week out there overall. It's been an ongoing thing for years. I think this will be his fourth year doing it, but it's been a pretty successful event. On the months when it rains, they used to do it in the library in the month of July if it rained. Of course, the library is closed, so he's looking for a place to one off on that. We recommended maybe the Raymer Center. So he had done some in the Martin Luther King Park in the past. He would bounce between the square and over there to try to include other areas of town. So he's going to look into maybe doing it there when the weather doesn't permit it to be outside. The app I talked about last month has been fully approved and is underway to be finished. It's called Wander with Maps. It's an app on your phone that'll be run by the CVB that should be out in early summer, approximately twelve weeks. You can, if you enjoy doing a certain number of things and certain types of foods, you punch that in and it'd give you either a driving path, a walking path, or it kind of lays out your day and where you can go and what time shows and what different things are and what restaurants you like might be along the way between the places you want to go to streamline your weekend or whatnot if you're in town visiting or if you live here and just want to see what it pops up for you, you know. Apple Harvest, they did give them one of the big grants, but it's for next fiscal year. It's a thirty thousand dollar grant to help them. I guess right now, the parade has become very expensive. Last year, they cut part of the route out and that was, I guess, on the city a little bit, but it's, their charge just from the city to do the event now is over eight thousand dollars to do that parade downtown. So the cost of the parade is around eighteen thousand in total. So they had a great breakdown of the costs of the whole event, and there's a lot more to that event than I really realized. This year, though, they are bringing some more of it back downtown. They're going to have something at the Bricks venue there where they were doing it at the Purple Iris, but they're still going to have the rodeo and several things out at the fairgrounds. So it's kind of spread throughout the county. There's something else in Wood during that week. People can look it up on their website and see all the details. They also awarded a Heritage Days grant to the Roundhouse for five thousand dollars. And that's about where they stand.
Very good, thank you.
First, I have a question. How the hell can a parade cost eighteen thousand dollars?
It's almost nine thousand dollars just to the city for.
Extra law enforcement.
Extra law enforcement, yeah, permits. And that's something new. They just started out two years ago. They didn't used to charge for it. I mean, I'm not going to say one way or another, but I mean, a community event that's been going on for a long time like that, it seems like a big charge, but.
I'd agree. I agree, yeah. I want to say this, though. I really appreciate the fact that the CVB is helping them and funding that. I think that's what should be done, and I appreciate that very much.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll talk about my meetings here. Mine, we're nearly as involved as yours. Had a water board meeting on Monday night. It was your typical water board meeting. The big thing that came out of that was the opening bids for the construction of two composite elevated water towers that we need to help with capacity and also being able to move water around the county efficiently. And there was two bids that came in. The first bid was from a company called CBI, and it was eighteen million two hundred and twelve, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Let's see, the second bid was twenty-one million even. I'm sorry, twenty-one million sixty-three dollars. Those were the two bids for those tanks and.
That was for both, right, John?
Yes, that's for both tanks. So the estimated high for the tanks was twenty million. The estimated low was sixteen million, so kind of right in the middle where they kind of thought they were going to come in at. So they seemed quite excited to get this project up and moving. It's going to be key to a couple other projects that are on, already slated to happen, to be able to have these water towers. My second meeting was a full meeting of Region Nine, and that was really just an overview of the projects that Region Nine has, the grants that they've been awarded, the grants that they are managing right now, kind of their overall budget. They are running in the black. They do have some monies left over. They're not a lot, but they are definitely not running in a deficit. They have some serious concerns about their healthcare insurance, what they're paying for PEIA, and I believe they're looking to try to maybe make a move or at least get some pricing to make a move, and I think they may be involved with some opportunities that we're looking into. That's really all I have on my meeting schedule.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Last Friday, I participated in the statewide County Commission Association Zoom meeting on our legislative session. To say the least, we're getting closer to crunch time here, and unfortunately, I missed that tomorrow because the governor's going to be in town, and I hope to attend that tomorrow. But we're under, we're at the threshold right now, the legislative session, so hopefully things will go well. The CCA staff is doing a good job of keeping everyone across the state informed of the different bills and things that are being presented. So on Tuesday, I did, was that the Develop Authority to listen to a proposed project along with HD, and I think you guys were there earlier in the day. We had an impact meeting Tuesday afternoon. Gary, Chad, Eddie and I with Tischler Vice and got an update on where we are with the impact fees. And I think we're going to be ready to move here soon, I would think, in that direction, but I was very pleased with the things we heard in that particular meeting. Wednesday, yesterday, we had an Inwood Park updated meeting with all the players, CDC and the Region Nine, and Gary and Eddie and myself. And I would say we're going to be able to go to bed here sometime here in the next few months. So it's finally coming to fruition, and we hope that it'll, you know, get rolling at this point sometime soon. Also, yesterday afternoon, we had a senior services meeting at three o'clock. Only thing going on there, they're planning the Heroes Dinner again this year in September. That was a fundraiser that was put in place last year. This will be the second annual. It was very well attended, and they netted about ten thousand dollars last year off the dinner. So they are planning that again. And later this evening, I do have an ambulance authority meeting. Since our last meeting, Tammy McDaniel, who's been a member for several years, has resigned. So we'll be taking applications for anyone interested in serving on the ambulance authority. So if you guys know of anybody that would be interested in, please have them apply. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. And just to touch on the Inwood Park, just so everybody understands that there are federal dollars, there are state dollars, and there are local dollars. So trying to coordinate and still not knowing one hundred percent about the state or the federal dollars puts us in a little bit of a limbo. But we're working through that the best we can, and Region Nine is a great partner for us on that, along with our engineering firm. But on Monday, Gary, Tracy, Jack, and myself interviewed five different architectural firms for the Public Safety Building on the north end of the county. All were quite qualified, without a doubt, but we've asked for quotes from three different vendors there. Also, that evening, I had a landmarks meeting, and most of that conversation was involving the Morgan Cabin repairs and approvals that the cabin group wants to be able to do there, and we thank them for the work for keeping that property in such nice repair. Tuesday, as Mr. Kelly had addressed, we did have a business development committee meeting at the Development Authority, which was an executive session, so we really can't speak much to that. And we came back for a Zoom meeting with Tischler and Vice on the impact fees, in which we're looking forward to the roundtable discussions that we'll have about those as well. Also, yesterday evening, at seven o'clock, we had the MOU meetings with the fire departments, had the chiefs, and to discuss, you know, originally, we had an MOU, which now has to be modified, you know, to address any additional changes that they wanted to make along the way, but also for the allowing of our 24-hour staff going into those facilities. And just this morning, we met with the Director of Parks and Rec about the funding needs that they want to have and need coming, moving forward. So it's been quite a busy week for everybody, it sounds like, yeah. But that's all good stuff. And next up is our Honorary County Commissioner. I would like to introduce Jeremiah Simpson. I'm sorry, hold on just one minute, Jeremiah.
I do have an appointment to, I want to nominate Louis Talbot to serve on the Farmland Protection Board. Protection Board, and he's going to be representing the Farm Bureau on that particular board. So I, I make a motion to appoint him to that particular board.
I would second that motion.
Properly moved and second any further discussion? The only thing I have to add there is I'm really impressed with the candidates that came forward, and like I said the other day, I appreciate that young people are trying to get involved, and there were some wonderful people that came before us, so-
We have one more position that will be open. The official time term limit for Gleason ends in early April, and so we'll have another appointment here in the next few weeks, but we have another interview next week scheduled with another person interested in serving on that board as well, so.
I'm impressed about how many people have come forward to want to serve on that board.
Just for that board alone, this will be the fifth interview.
Yes.
Okay, call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Next up, Jeremiah, is our honorary county commissioner, Jeremiah Simpson. He's from St. Joe School. Welcome.
Come forward with Commissioner Hardy, he will swear you in.
Stand right here, we'll get you all sworn in. Can I get you to raise your right hand? Aye, Jeremiah Simpson.
Aye, Jeremiah Simpson.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill the responsibilities.
That I will work hard to fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the State of, of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, thank you very much. Got this here certificate for you. You can sit right back down there. If you have any questions or anything that you want to, you know, anything we're talking about, you want to jump in, please help yourself, feel free, okay?
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, you want to tell us about yourself? Oh, yeah.
So, my name is Jeremiah Simpson. I've been at St. Joseph's School for nine years, since kindergarten, and I'm going to Martinsburg next year. And my hobbies, I've just been doing football and jiu-jitsu.
The governor of West Virginia will be at your school tomorrow morning at 10:00, so.
Yeah. Any future, any plans what you might do when you, when you grow up? And if you don't know, it's okay because you've still got plenty of time to figure it out.
I've been looking towards engineering.
Oh, that's wonderful. Civil or?
I don't know.
Not sure yet?
Probably architecture.
Yeah, well, that's good. Well, thank you for being here today. We appreciate you coming and being a part of our commission today. If you have any questions or anything that you'd like to give to us as we're working through our agenda, please feel free to jump in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Fine World, we're almost right on the money for our bid opens.
Before we open bids, when I grew up, Mr. Hardy, I'd love to have awesome hair like Jeremiah.
Yeah.
So you have a bid opening for two full-size S U Vs. You do have the certification of publication, and they were advertised on the website and direct mail to folks who know are interested. These are for use in your transport division. You currently have two Tahos that are both approaching about 150,000 miles. While that's not an ordinary amount of miles, it is for vehicles that we put prisoners in and transport them, five, six, seven, eight hours, one direction. So this is to replace those. You can't make it directions anymore clear, so please attach this page to the front of
Okay, we're halfway back. This is a Whiteside Chevrolet G M C out of St. Clairsville, Ohio. For 2025 Tahos, $65,207 per S U V. $130,414 total for both.
Mr. President, can you say that number one more time?
Is that, was that the first one?
Yes, sir.
Who was the bidder for that person?
The first one was Whiteside Chevrolet out of St. Clairville, Ohio. And this one. Tell me what, for somebody that wants to sell vehicles. I haven't figured out the name of these people yet.
Hey, here's the fourth one, finally had it on the first page.
Cadet Company L L C. Cadet Company L L C, Action Place out of Willing, West Virginia. And that is on 2025 Nissan Kick.
I don't think that's what we're looking for.
One marshal won't fit in it, just for the record. The prisoner can't go.
Unit price, $30,989.
You've had those folks respond before, and actually, I tried to call them and Tracy tried, they, they wrong communicated, you can't even get to them. I think they just like to fill out forms.
Next one is from New Smyrna Beach Chevrolet, out of Smyrna Beach, Florida. For a 2025 Chevrolet Suburban, $78,205.50. Hagerstown Ford, on a 2024 Ford Expedition, $61,965. And they are, Hagerstown Ford is on Massey Boulevard in Hagerstown.
And if you don't like it, bring it back.
That's what they say. Okay, are you ready to go on your laptop?
Yes, sir. Is the commission note you opened bids on March 6th for mobile data computers for law enforcement? You had one response, it was from Unistar Sparko Computers. The bid specs were written for 23, and their bid response was for that at $23,621. However, you have a $50,000 grant, so we're recommending if the commission sees fit to, instead of the quantity 23, to buy, purchase the quantity of 35. So the amount awarded will be $35,945. They came in a little less expensive than expected. And the other, the other amounts up to 50 are for the mounting hardware in the cars that is beneath the bid spec, that's why. So 35 of them at $35,945 to Unistar Sparko Computers.
And Gary, can you remind me what grant that was?
It's a, it's a law enforcement grant that, it's, it's old, it's not new. It was initially written for drones.
Right.
And with the changes in the laws, the, that federal money's not to be allowed, isn't allowed to be used to purchase the drones they wanted. So what we did was switched and re-scoped the grant for laptops and use operating capital cash that wasn't grant funds to buy the drones that wanted.
This will give us 35 new computers for law enforcement?
In, in their cruisers, yes, sir.
Okay, need a motion to approve the purchase of 35 laptop computers from Unistar Sparko Computer Incorporated in the amount of $35,945.
So moved. I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, ayes have it, thank you. Next up, Gary is, along with Tim Zia, is our Community Corrections Director. Motion to approve M O U.
Mr. President, I also want to recognize we have Prosecutor Matt Harvey from Jefferson County and-
Good morning, Matt.
Eddie Benitez is the county administrator.
Very good, welcome.
So Eddie, myself and Director Zia met with a delegation from Jefferson County last, Tuesday, last week, whatever it was, and in that delegation were the Jefferson County Commission, Jefferson County Prosecutor's Office, Jefferson County magistrate's office, Jefferson County Circuit Judges. And the conversation was, I'm not going to call it a plea for help, but a request for help from Jefferson County to the Berkeley County Commission for some community correction services that you know you've got probably, if not the, but one of the best directors in the state of West Virginia and a very successful community corrections program. The conversation started with just, hey, it was between Eddie and I, it was like, Matt's intimate with what Tim does because he's on the first foundation board with Tim, but was, hey, how do you guys do it and what do you do? Because their 501(c)(3) Community Correct Day Report Center that they have used to support the courts issued them a surprise notice that they were going to shut their program down in effect of June 30 of 2025. The Jefferson County Commission wouldn't have a day report center option. So that, all of you know, and I'll say all five of you know from Mr. Whittaker, what value the day report center has and the community corrections programs have to your budget, right? So Jefferson County Commission is faced with that option, so they can just assume that the courts won't have a referral program, and all of the then participants of community corrections would just be put in jail, and they'd have the lovely regional jail bill and watch it increase as time goes on. So they came up and sit down, and we kind of discussed, and they got a tour of the building and kind of a, a one-two punch of how Tim does these business and what, how they've been successful. Jefferson County took that back, and their commission met last week, and they formulated their plan of action to spin up a internal day report center, as you have it now in the community correction programs. What everybody now knows is that's impossible to get started prior to the current fiscal year, more or less support the court appointments from the court now until they get their plan stood up. So what you have in your read ahead is the Jefferson County Commission's day report plan. You have some support letters from the court system down there to include Mr. Harvey that says, hey, Berkeley County Commission, would you mind providing those services to our court-appointed processes that they're going to put them into your program? And Tim has been in discussion and is, and I'll let him speak, and he's prepared to do that. The question from behind the bench here is, how does it impact you and your team, and how does it impact your financial situation for that support? Jefferson County is prepared to pay 100% of their costs. They're not asking you to spend any of your Berkeley County monies or your Berkeley County grants to support that. So all of the dollars are in place in the request. Matter of fact, the agreement that you approved to be signed will be inclusive of Jefferson County's, the diversion of Jefferson County's grant money into your day report center program for the next fiscal year. Jefferson County's plan is to be and have theirs stood up for fiscal year '27, which would be July 1, 2026. So their ask is, for the next year, could you help? The last part of that read ahead is your M O U that has been vetted by your attorneys and shared with everyone that just kind of defines the scope. Long story short, and I'll let Tim get into what the mechanics look like, they'll be transporting their folks to your center to do the business up here, but important to remember that at no cost to you and at no cost to the taxpayers of Berkeley County. Jefferson County wants to carry their own weight, they just want help. Yep?
Gary just explained all that very well. What questions do you all have about that? I'm happy to help.
Course he is.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been involved in a good bit of those conversations, and for me, it started when Prosecutor Matt Harvey called and says, Eddie, we have a problem, and I want to know if there's any way Berkeley County could help. And I'm like, well, we need to get, we need to sit down and talk to Gary and Tim and see, you know, what we can do. To me, this is about people. It's always been about people, you know, people that are currently in not only our, but their day reports program. Some, some are reaching the end of, of their battle, and good things are going to happen for them. So for that to collapse around them, I think is very detrimental to that person. So, you know, my, I think my comment to Matt right away was, is it cannot have any negative impacts on our staff or negative impacts on our finances. And we've been assured that, that those things will be addressed, and I, I think it's another great opportunity for us to be able to partner with our neighbors and, and help them out until they can get stood up. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, my comments would be, as long as, you know, this is not burdensome to you or your staff, it's not going to affect the Berkeley County taxpayers. You know, I, I believe it's very important for us to be able to work with our surrounding counties, to be able to, to help them in their process while they're trying to move forward on a new process, to protect these people that have been, you know, going through this program. Like Eddie said, there's no way we want to kind of drop these people off the edge of the cliff as they're working through this program, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to partner with Jefferson County and partner with our friends. You've assured us that this is not burdensome to you or your staff. The funds are clearly separated. Jefferson County is going to pay for their own people, we'll pay for our own people. It's not a burden to any of our taxpayers. I mean, I think everyone feels very comfortable with it. You're the number one guy that has to feel comfortable with it because you're, you're steering the ship, and you've assured us that, that you and your staff can handle this. And so I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be involved, to help Jefferson County in this time and while they're getting their new program up and running. So I couldn't, I really supported 100%.
Appreciate it, Tim, the fact that, you know, I commend you on the taking on this responsibility because I know your plate's already full, so. And I agree that, you know, we can help out our neighbors too, our east or west, we should do that, and I just appreciate our staff and the involvement you got, Gary and Tim, to make this happen and help them out. We can't thank you enough, we appreciate what you do, brother.
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, again, appreciate it. I think it's good to work with Jefferson County. I do just have a couple of questions because I always like to be informed and know, in case somebody asks me, like, are we bringing in additional people to work over there? Is your current staff enough? I know they're paying the bill, but I'm, I'm just curious, do, are we building up a bigger staff to carry this? Are they bringing people in? Are we going to bring people in part-time? How's that kind of work?
So our, our plan is going to be to, if, if you all are okay with it, we're going to start an immediate recruitment, hopefully tomorrow, Monday at the latest, for a driver. Jefferson County is dropping off a vehicle either today or tomorrow with their own fuel cart in it, and, and we're going to hire a driver that's going to be dedicated to transporting folks from Jefferson County to our facility. And when we hire that person, it's going to be under the agreement that you're temporarily going to be a Berkeley County employee. You know, when, when Jefferson County is up and running and they've got a, a center to stand up on their own, that person will be transitioned over to, to the Jefferson County Commission, and they'll become that person's employer. And then we're doing some scrambling, that, several of the state grants that are, that are set aside for day report centers are due like now, so we're, we're making some modifications to those applications. I've already talked with folks down at J C S, and they've, they've even allowed for an extension, if necessary, for us to get the applications together. Once we're notified of those awards, and I, and I do anticipate that the funds that had been previously going to the Jefferson Day Report Center will, will go to us for, for the next year, we'll be able to hire some staff that are dedicated to assisting with Jefferson County folks with the same agreement. You're being hired by Berkeley County for now, but you'll, you'll, you'll transition over to Jefferson County once they're ready for that. 12 months, maybe, maybe 18, something like that, is, is kind of loosely the plan. So no, this, this is an effort that will require some extra work, but I'm happy to do it, and it will not affect Berkeley, Berkeley County taxpayer dollars. These things are going to be kept separate, and we're just going to, we're going to help our neighbor.
Sounds great.
Very good.
A new addition helps at this point in time.
It does, it does.
Mr. President, if I could, just-
Mr. President, if I could, just for purposes, and Tim alluded to it, part of the discussion was, and Eddie Benitez wears my hat much better than me up here, but part of it is a learning opportunity for them. And she's asked, you know, as you guys go through this process, may we be involved. We're an open book. As you've said 100 times, it doesn't matter whether it's the way we dig ditches or the way we train employees. If we can share, whether it be our successes or our failures, and I think that's all we're trying to do here and what the commission's opportunity is, is to share what you've already done and have proven to be successful, why not share it with our neighbors and let them be just as successful as we are, maybe more successful.
Very good. Okay, I need a motion to approve the MOU and give the president the authority to sign the document.
I would move to do that, sir, and I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You just have to keep it out on that Harvey guy is all I got to say, Tim.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, next up is Anthony Petrucci, county clerk. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. Jeremiah, how you doing?
We figured that hair, Tony.
Huh?
We think that young man's hair.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Tony had hair like that.
Yeah.
Fifty-five years ago.
Tony looked like he used to have hair like that.
I did want to also recommend that engineering, Notre Dame University, strong university engineering program, 99% of their people graduate, even their athletes. And I do want to commend you all for helping out Jefferson County. It was very admirable for you all to do that. Doesn't happen every day, believe me, in the country or in the counties. We're here today, Mr. Alderton and I, who is the administrative assistant for the civil service. And as you know, most people, when they think of the county clerk, they think of one thing: elections, right? Then secondly, probably the recording that we do downstairs for the county. The third part, and it's probably overlooked, and I doubt if you would ask nine out of 10 people in the county, they wouldn't know that we're involved with civil service. It's good.
I feel covered.
That's all right.
It's working.
Yeah, there you go. So anyway, we have Mr. Alderton along with the Sheriff's Association and the Sheriff's Department working hard on this civil service program to hire people yearly. There's a process and there is an annual report that I think most everybody should have in the read ahead. And there's just a couple of things I'm going to mention and I'm going to turn it over to John. He's the grunt of it. And if you have any questions for him, feel free to ask. But the mission statement of this is the Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission is dedicated to ensuring a fair, transparent, and merit-based process for the recruitment, promotion, and retention of deputy sheriffs. Retention is very important. We strive to uphold the highest standards of integrity, professionalism, and accountability supporting the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office and its mission to serve and protect the community. We also have a vision statement, which it seems like most organizations do. Our vision is to be a model of excellence in civil service governance, fostering a culture of fairness, trust, and continuous improvement. We aim to empower a highly skilled and diverse law enforcement workforce that is committed to the public service, enhancing community safety and building lasting confidence in our justice system. One last thing that I'm going to say, and it's by code, and Mr. Harvick probably has seen this before, but by code, West Virginia State Code 7-14-6, powers and duties of commission it states to make an annual report to the county court, county commission, and sheriff showing its own actions, its rules and regulations, including all exceptions thereto enforced and the practical efforts thereof, and any suggestions it may have for more factual accomplishment of the purposes of this article. Such report shall be available for public inspection five days after it shall have been delivered to the county court and sheriff. So that's one reason why we're here. We do have this report. It's fairly lengthy. I'm sure most of you all have taken a look at most of it and it, there's a lot of information. Mr. Alderton took a lot of time to put this together. I commend him for that. It seems like each year, since I've been here, of course, it's not been two years, it's been more lengthy and more diverse. And the civil service program has, what I see in past experience, has a real good communication efforts with the Sheriff's Association and the sheriff himself along with his chief deputies. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alderton. He can explain it probably a lot better than me in depth. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. And if you ever have any one-on-one questions, come make an appointment with him down in our office and he'd be glad to talk to you about anything that you might have a question about. Okay?
Thank you. Good morning, John.
Good morning, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. President Gokunour, Vice President Catlett, Commissioners Bleed and Hardy, and Honorary Commissioner Jeremiah. Thank you for allowing us to come before you today. I'm going to start out by saying, back when I was in the military, I had a commander tell me one time that enthusiasm is temporary, passion is foreverlasting. I really have a passion for what I do and hopefully my work does reflect my passion. The county clerk last year appointed me to serve as the go-between, as his representative to the civil service. And it was actually a year ago, April 1st, I started. So what do you do when you first get appointed something? You do an in-depth dive and see where you stand. That's what I did. This was, the annual report was one thing that was glowing to me that had never been submitted properly. As he, county clerk alluded to, that it is in state code that we present, the civil service commission presents you an annual report. The past annual reports were two pages. They were never presented to you. This here is a very comprehensive report and I personally feel that it is in accordance with West Virginia State Code. 2024 was a busy year and I truly believe that 2025 is going to be just as busy as if not busier. The annual report, you all have your electronic versions of it. I tried to bring technology into this report as it was being created by using hyperlinks on the table of contents. If you click in on the control and hyper, on the hyperlink, it'll take you to the direct page that you're wanting to get to.
That's much appreciated.
Well, we learn. We learn. And I was big on, in my past with military, with hyperlinks. So the table of contents, it is very in-depth. We've addressed a year in review. We've addressed goals that we have for 2025. And what you have in there also in the 2024 report is the current rules and regulations. We, as the civil service commission, are in the process of revising those rules and regulations. They have not been updated since September 15th of 2021. Hopefully, within the next 30, no later than 60 days, we will have a revision of the rules, a complete revision of the rules and regulations. Clerk Petrucci alluded to the mission and vision statement, primarily the vision about being recognized for excellence and what have you. I truly believe we're on the cusp of that because we are now starting to get questions coming to Berkeley County Civil Service about our civil service program. So we're reaching out. I would like to take a minute or 30 seconds and recognize some of your direct employees. And one of them is in the room here today with Ms. Penny Shul, Leah Tucker over there, and Kristen as well. They help us immensely. We send stuff up, they publish it. So we want to include a special thank you page in there and that is in there. To also recognize Ms. Brandy Sullivan of the sheriff's office and the IT department, along with the men and women of the sheriff's department who help us with our open hire test that we offer. I would like for you to ask the assistants of helping us get the word out by putting this annual report out there on the county webpage and to do maybe a social media type push out to let folks know about this annual report and what we do. And I also encourage each of you to stop by if you have any questions. Mr. Petrucci said about making an appointment. I'm a walk-in kind of guy. You come on down there and see me. We'll chat. More importantly, you've heard my spiel. What questions do you have after looking at that report?
It's, well, it's quite in-depth report and thank you for that. But, you know, I don't really have any questions about the report, John. I think the thing that I appreciate, having been a former civil servant employee, is the integrity of the process, whether it be hiring or promotion, even disciplined hearings.
Yes.
So it's very important that the law be followed and that each officer is given their due by law. And that's critically important to them and their families and their well-being. So that's what we expect and hope, you know, would come from you and your board. Thank you for that.
Thank you. The board, right now, the board president is Mr. Dale Buck. He's, let's say, a city judge down with the city police department. The other two commissioners are that of Stephen Dobson, who is appointed by the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and Mr. James Moffett, Jim Moffett, who is appointed by you folks. So those are the three commissioners on our board.
Yes, Jim serves on the ambulance authority as well for us.
Yes, sir, he does. Yes, sir, he does.
I've known Steve Dobson for some time. He's a very good man and good man to have on the board. So I will tell you when I was, when I got the email of my agenda and I saw it on here at 10:15 that we would be getting a Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Annual Report, you know, I was expecting a two or three-page report. And then when I got my read ahead on my iPad here, obviously, there's been some work and some detail put into this report. Thank you for that. I mean, I took a little time last night and a little more time this morning to kind of, I didn't read it all, but I kind of, you know, glazed through it or whatever. And there, there's a lot of detail in here and this is a very, you've really done your due diligence on this report and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
I got two-thirds of it last night. My recliner before I fell asleep the first time. So I didn't finish it all last night. The one thing I had a question about there, I was under a misunderstanding. I didn't think the chief deputy was a civil service deputy. But this is that position is a civil service deputy.
Some parts of their duties and responsibilities will fall under. They're not afforded the complete civil service protection.
Okay. But in some aspects, they are.
Yes, sir.
Is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Clarify that, then. I was confused about that. We do appreciate the report and the time you put in, John.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Mr., you good?
Yeah, looks great.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll go take a little break so we can get a picture with Jeremiah.
What's your count?
All right, we're back in session. Next up, Chief Roberts. Introduction of our new professional firefighters. Come on, Chief.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
We were asked to come before you guys this morning to present the recruit class that's going through the first Berkeley County Fire Department Fire Academy right now. And I am going to allow Lieutenant Sybil to come up here. He's got a piece to say and present to you all on the gentleman behind us, so.
Hello, Lieutenant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for having us here. We appreciate the time. I would like to take this moment to introduce everybody. So, if we could have our recruits come up.
Come, be dusted. Move. Right face. Up to the rice ball out.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would like to first start out with saying and recognizing Lieutenant Jeremy Taylor. This idea was one that he felt very strongly of and believed a lot in. Yesterday marked four months since we have lost him. I would like to take that time and recognize him and show the dedication and how we are honoring him through this academy. The recruits are learning about him and his time of service, and they are very fortunate to have the experience that he passed on to each of us. I feel very fortunate that I got to work with him as well, and I was able to hopefully carry on what he wanted to see and see it through to the ability that he would like to have everybody trained to. Training was a big passion of his. We are trying to instill this in these 12 gentlemen. I have the help of three current staff. I have firefighter Markley, firefighter Fowles, and firefighter Crowe. They've been very diligent in helping through this academy so far. We're also taking help from the guys on shift at Station 60 at Baker Heights. None of this can be done solely. This is a team effort, and I appreciate all of them for pitching in. First off, I'd like to introduce recruit Jed Ty. Jed Ty has one wife. Her name is Autumn. They share one daughter. They have a daughter on the way. He lives in Slainsville. He comes to us with five years of service prior to coming to Berkeley County. Thank you, Jed. Firefighter recruit Roger Bradford. His wife is Serena. They share four children, two boys and two girls. He lives in Moorfield. He makes the commute down. He is an asset to our department. He is also in WVPSD training. We utilize his abilities and skills as well. He has 30 years in the fire service prior to coming to us. Thank you, Roger. Recruit Daniel Miller. His wife is Nicole. They share one daughter. He lives in Fountain. He has 20 years in the fire service prior to coming to Berkeley County. Thank you, Daniel. Firefighter Gary Huggins. His wife is Kayla. They have three kids, two daughters, one son. He lives in Bunker Hill. He has eight years in the fire service, and he is also in the Air Force as well. Thank you, Gary. Recruit RJ Hahn. Him and his girlfriend Leah, they live in Charles Town. He has 13 years in the fire service. Prior to coming to Berkeley County, he was also employed with Jefferson County Dispatch Center. Thank you, RJ. Firefighter Jesse Bly. Lives with his girlfriend Bree, currently in Martinsburg. They just moved up here. He's originally from Chandoa County, Virginia. Jesse has 10 years in the fire service. Thank you, Jesse. Recruit Ashton Shamball. Him and his girlfriend Andrea now live in Jaredstown. He's originally from Slainsville. Ashton has four years in the fire service. Thank you, Ashton. Ed Hernandez. Him and his wife Jessica share three children, two daughters, one son. He lives in Chandoa Junction. He has 11 years in the fire service. Prior to coming to us, he was in the career department in Jefferson County. Thank you, Ed. Recruit Cody Keith. Him and his girlfriend Bethany share one daughter, and they have one son on the way. He lives in Martinsburg. He has nine years in the fire service, also in the Air Force. Thank you, Cody. Recruit Josh Mills. Him and his wife Sheena have two children, one son, one daughter. He commutes to us from Mercer'sburg, Pennsylvania. He has 10 years in the fire service. He was also career in Mercer'sburg. Thank you, Josh. Recruit AJ Biller. Him and his girlfriend Taylor, they share five children, two daughters, three sons. He currently lives in Martinsburg, 10 years in the fire service. He also came from Jefferson County in the career service there. Thank you, AJ. Recruit Bodie Fritsch. Him and his girlfriend Amanda, they live in Hedgesville. He has three years in the fire service. Thank you, Bodie. These are your 12 recruits for the first Berkeley County Fire Academy. To my knowledge, I believe that we're the first county career recruit academy in the state, something to take great pride in, thankful to be a part of it, very grateful to be leading the charge on it. Do not take this lightly. Hope to turn out 12 good employees. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all.
Well, you know, I had the opportunity to meet you Monday morning, and as I told you then, we're very proud of you. And, you know, in this county, we're the first a lot of things. But this right here is really important to me in particular, and to see how it's growing, the respect that you guys are gaining in our community, the opportunities that you're going to have in this community, and the service that you're going to provide in this community. So, I know that firefighter Markley, Fowles, and Crowe are, I think, are, and along with Lieutenant Sybil, are your main instructors. And, you know, these guys have been there and done that. They're smart, and they're aggressive, and they're good at what they do. So, pay attention to them and learn from them. And, you know, all we ask is that you just take good care of the people that you serve. That's what we ask, you know? So, welcome to Berkeley County and look forward to some great things from you.
I'm impressed about the fact that 10 years, 20 years, 30 years of service already. And so, it's not like we got 12 new people that you're learning, you know, screening and learning from scratch. The tenure that some of these guys have is amazing, so. But when I first got on the commission was just two, two years and three months ago. It was a talk, "We need more paid firefighters in Berkeley County." And I told the chief, I tried to do everything I could as a commissioner to try to make that happen. I'm very, I'm standing next to a legend firefighter, by the way, so he had a little bit of influence on me, so. But he didn't need to convince me too hard that this was the right thing to do for our community. And I was in Parks and Rec for 45 years, and I always told my lifeguard, "You got the most important job in the whole park system because you save lives, and you have probably the most important job in Berkeley County." We appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, thank you all very much for being willing to step up and take on this challenge. The only thing I know about fighting fires is pick up phone call 911. So, we're blessed to have you guys. I am so excited to be a part of this new era in Berkeley County. Not only do we have paid fire staff, we're the only county in the state of West Virginia that has county paid fire staff. Now, we have 24, we're going to have 24-hour paid fire staff. I don't know if our constituents and taxpayers know how important that is, you know, in the time of need when you pick that phone up and call those, hit those three digits that someone's there to respond. And this is, this is monumental in the state of West Virginia, but more importantly, it's monumental in Berkeley County to have 24-hour paid firefighters. And I applaud you guys for being willing to step up and go through this training and do everything that you do every day to risk yourself. And so, from that point, I'm very appreciative of all of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyd?
Yeah, this is pretty awesome. It's something we've been working for, for a couple of years now. Like Steve said, I've been here the same amount of time he's been here and, you know, building up the police force and also getting the addition of paid firefighters is something that's been important to us. Unfortunately, in the past, you know, we've lost some, lost some lives, and we wanted to correct that and try to do better, you know? And this is a step in the right direction for that. You know, we're a little bit different here in Berkeley County than other counties in the state, you know? They have a lot of municipalities with a lot of fire departments, and unfortunately, we're laid out different. We have one municipality in one county that is almost like one huge municipality, but without the generation of funds that municipalities are able to get. So, this has definitely been a challenge, but we're getting there, and this is a pretty awesome thing. Thank you, guys, for stepping up.
Yeah, and also, you know, it's critically important that you understand that this was truly a partnership with the Berkeley County Fire Service Board. You know, those efforts of that board and its staff has helped get you here today. And so, we want to be thankful for their contribution. And also, you know, the volunteer fire departments that have served this county since 1956. You're not there to replace them. You're there to assist them, and you're going into their facilities. And, you know, I know you're being taught about respect, and so those things need to be done, you know, when you go into these firehouses and earn your way. But you're just, we're just incredibly proud of you, and thank you. Thank you for accepting these positions, Chief. Thank you for your leadership, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to, for the, for the, for the
Yes, so, excuse me?
Sure. Well, I was going to say, were respectful, people, both of you guys before I were making them, and doing your calls and, and, and so, very respectful. I don't know if this is the firemen in you or, but each group that I, that I do, firefighters are always such, so respectful, but doing your benefit at all that you all are doing respectful, even in the hall this morning. The day I did you as the group, you walk in this morning looking like a whole team together and respectful in the hallway.
Very impressive. Very impressive. Very good gentlemen. I'm sorry to tell you, but I think you need to go back to your classroom.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Company, attention! All out!
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you gentlemen. Don't see Paula in our midst.
I don't know all the, how many accomplishments we had over my last two, two years, three months, but this is right at the top of the list in my mind. What we've done as a commission. So I am really impressed with that group. Think it's going to be a wonderful benefit to our community.
Just the fact that when somebody calls 911 and they need a fire truck, there's going to be help on the way. And that's, you know, that's critically important, you know, they get there much quicker.
We sit around those CCA meetings and listen to the horror stories about other parts of the state.
No one responds.
They had, lady, they were talking about they had a fire truck shoved in there and didn't have any water in it. When it got there after they waited so long and it had no water in it. So they had to wait for another truck to come from, I mean, to hear those stories is like...
45 minute response times.
A new ones. Hi Paula.
Hello.
Good morning. Are you ready to go?
We have a few, I think, we're trying to fill a court.
Okay. Oh, we'll wait. Yeah, we're going to jump off here for a minute, just a couple minute break. Okay, we're back. Good morning, Paula. Come on forward please. How you doing this morning?
I'm good.
Good. Good.
Good morning. I apologize.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
You're on schedule, you're doing fine.
Thank you, thank you. I am here today to introduce you to our new academy. This is one of the largest academies that we have had. They actually have finished their certifications in fire, EMD and police dispatch. They have also had their, we operate on a software, a ProQA package, a software package for all three disciplines for fire, police and ambulance. They have went through that class. They've also went through some additional CAD and scenario-driven exercise in classroom. They haven't been introduced to the mapping portion of it, which is what I teach in classroom. However, they will endure that within the next week or two, which is quite extensive. They currently are doing some meet and greet with the fire departments because today it's nice to not only see a voice on the other side of the radio, but to also understand when they are dispatching equipment to a scene, that they know what, they know what that piece of equipment looks like, what it houses, and get to speak, you know, to some of those members at that point in time. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce you to those nine people. And may I add that they all have passed, you know, all classes and have upheld to what they signed on for currently. So with that, I'd like to bring all nine of them up to include Angela, who is the actual instructor of the class.
Thank you. That's not all Angela is, just for the record.
Yeah. Would you like Gary to, you know? To elaborate on his comment?
Yes, would you?
So here is our nine people. Again, I'm trying to learn their names as well, especially with this group. So I'm going to start on my left and move, I mean, sort of my right and move to my left. At the very end, Caitlin Shank. We have Corbin Henderson. Destiny Telke. Randy Arnold. Robin Baker. Shelby Jaeger. Rebecca Lewis. Tom Jones. And Susan Guerrero, right?
Welcome.
Yes, also Susan Guerrero is fluent in Spanish. So that's always welcoming.
Yeah, so when will they be on the floor or are they on the floor already?
We are, no, no sir, they're not on the floor yet. It is strictly classroom environment right now. So they will not go to the floor until probably about that third week. We're gearing towards the 25th of April. So they still have a few weeks left in classroom.
Couple more weeks before the chaos.
Yes, yes.
Delivering babies at no time.
That's right, that's right. Yes. But they, they get a full, I would say they could, they could vouch that they have gotten quite a bit of information. A lot of these that you see in front of you, with the exception of Tom, have never been in the emergency environment. They've not ran with any fire departments or EMS departments or even been affiliated with any type of emergency in the past, correct? So I would say that it was an eye-opening experience for them thus far with the things that they've already listened to, the things that they have already heard, to basically prepare them for what it is that they're going to be dealing with. Obviously scenarios and hearing it is nothing like the real deal when it's live and in action. But at least they know upfront what it is that is going to be expected and anticipated.
Very good. Well, you know, you're our first line of defense when somebody needs help. You're going to catch them at their very, very worst time of their entire lives. So there's a lot of pressure on you, but also know there's things in your agency to help support you through all that. Our technology, I think, is extremely good. And our facility, I think, is nice and a good work environment for you. And it takes a lot, you know, to run this county. And I know that some of you will have your preference of whether you're talking to police officers or firemen or EMS, you know? But you know, once again, they're all critical services to us. And they demand, a lot of times, your, their lives depend on you to be able to get the information out to additional police officers or firefighters, wherever the incident may be. And they have a May Day, that's, you know, that's a terrible, terrible time on the fire ground. But it also puts a lot of strain and stress on you because of the things that you have to do to recognize and respond to that yourselves. So you know, hang on to your training and because there's a lot of people depend on you. Thank you, thank you for coming to Berkeley County. And as I just told the firemen, we're proud to have you and welcome to Berkeley County.
Thank you and thank you for your support as well.
I just told the firefighters, I said, you guys are the most important people in our whole, we have 400 employees in our county. You're the most important because you save lives, but you guys are right there with them, maybe even more so. Because you deal with it every single day. They might have a fire, not every day, but you're going with it every day. So we appreciate you greatly. And it's great to know that we have people like yourselves that are willing to serve in this role, which is so important. As commissioners, our number one concern is public safety, obviously. That's what we're most concerned about. And to have the firefighters before you and now you guys here, it just makes me proud to be a part of this. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you as well.
Thank you guys for answering the call. We're glad to have you, welcome to Berkeley County. And these guys have summed it up. I mean, you guys are the first line of defense and you are going to hear people in their weakest, most vulnerable, scariest moments of their lives. And that's a lot to deal with. And we appreciate you guys being able to train and put yourself out to those type of situations. Thank you and welcome to Berkeley County.
Just reiterate what they had to say and thank you guys very much. And get ready for that wild ride because you're going to have some.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good Paula, thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Angela, did you want to say anything additional? No? Okay, you guys good? All right, well, thank you so much. And you gentlemen have a...
Have a great day.
You as well.
Good luck to you. Just going to conclude this session. We do have a need for executive session pending litigation. But before we do that, I just want the public... Yes, sir, please come forward, Sean. State your name, please.
Good morning gentlemen, good morning ma'am. My name is Sean Wilt. I'm a resident of Berkeley County. A while back, I had come to the commission with some questions about stuff to do with 2024 election and some voting things. And you gentlemen directed me to speak to Mr. Petrucci, the county clerk. And I would just like to say, as someone who's been involved with, as much as I can be, I guess you can say, with the election process here in Berkeley County, because I'm a longtime poll worker, and have dealt with the revolving door of people that were the county clerk before. I would like to say that Mr. Petrucci, I'd like to publicly acknowledge him because he answered every question that I had. And I had a few honest questions, questions that not only myself, but a lot of people that I know, who just don't have time to come down here during the day when you guys are open to ask those questions. And he answered every one of them. And if he didn't know, which there are very few that he didn't, he found out and he got back to me. And that's the way that it's supposed to work. And I'm very appreciative of him and I'm glad that he is the man that's in the job that he's in. Because he seems very much to care about what he's doing. And as that gentleman that came with him said, it seems to me that he has a passion for the job that he does. Because he, I'm sure that it's not just me. If any person who was a resident of Berkeley County came to him with a question, he would find out. If he did not know the answer, he would find out and he would get back to them. Today, during the break, he answered a question for me that no one else, not a single person in the election office, was able to answer. Even though, as he told me, that information is literally readily available on a calendar. Apparently, no one looks at it except for him. But he, I'm so glad that he's here. He's discussed with me many things about Berkeley County's plans for better voter poll worker registration, or not registration, I'm sorry, for training and things like that. And he even, he even asked, because I try to be a, I try not to be a, here's a problem, you go solve it person. I try to offer suggestions, well-thought-out suggestions. And he listened to some suggestions that I had. And he found, apparently, he must have found them pretty interesting because they're looking into a few of them. That doesn't mean they're going to happen, but they're going to look into a few of them. He found them very interesting and he had had some similar ideas himself, which tells me he, great minds think alike. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him and the job that he's doing. And I hope that he continues going the way that he is. Today, he unfortunately dashed some personal hopes I had for the 2026 election, but I have more time to prepare for the 2028 election. That's all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I need a motion for us to go into executive session.
Same move, Mr. President.
We are in executive session.